And I'm with the League of Women Voters here in Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under ground rules set for this forum. These ground rules are posted outside of the room. Please switch off all electronic devices and to silent. Campaign literature or other forms of campaigning such as buttons and T-shirts are not permitted inside the forum room in order to maintain neutrality. We are videotaping tonight's forum, broadcasting through the public access channel, and the session will be available on our website, l w v b a e dot org, or through votersedge.org/ca. You can tweet us at @L W V B A E. We ask that candidates hold their applause, that each one of you hold your applause until the end so that we can hear the candidates speak. We have two forums on the agenda this evening. The first will be for Emeryville City Council. There are three candidates running for this position. They are Diane Martinez, Scott Donahue, and Ken Bukowski. The second forum this evening will be for Emeryville School Board. There are five candidates running for that position. They are Katie Brown, Ken Bukowski, Brenda Collins, Susan Donaldson, and Sarah Nguyen. Ground rules. Now let's go over a few ground rules. Each candidate has one and a half minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined by drawing lots. The timekeeper, she's sitting right up front, will signal candidates with colored signs marked "one minute," "thirty seconds," "fifteen seconds," and "stop." As audience members arrived, our volunteers provided cards for submitting written questions. The questions will be screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Again, the timekeepers will signal each candidate. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate shall have one and a half minute for closing statements. Now, let's begin with our first candidate. Ms. Martinez, do you support Emeryville? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Ms. Martinez, we will give you one and a half minutes. Is the timekeeper ready? Thank you. You will have one and a half minutes to begin with an opening statement.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for putting this on. Thank you to everyone in attendance and watching at home. I'm Diane Martinez, and here's a little bit about me. I'm a child of immigrants, of people who came to this country in search of political asylum, of a lawyer and an accounting teacher who were so poor when they came to this country that they scavenged furniture off the sidewalks. Four years ago, I ran for city council because I wanted to make things better for working families like the one I grew up in. I promised to fight for working families. I pledged to raise the minimum wage, and I'm proud to say that the fight for 15 is over here in Emeryville. Today, our lowest-paid workers make $15 an hour, and because of legislation that I brought forward, our retail workers and fast-food workers have scheduling notice. The voters in Emeryville have chosen overwhelmingly to legalize cannabis, and in harmony with those voices, I championed lifting our local ban on cannabis and helped to bring reputable cannabis businesses into our community. I'm also proud on the city council's work expanding our homeless strategy. If I'm reelected, I pledge to continue my work to increase revenue and pay down liabilities. I also pledge to work on protecting our most vulnerable residents from displacement, and there's still more work to be done for working families in Emeryville, and that's why I'm asking for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, League of Women Voters. I've been in Emeryville longer than most people. I've been here more than 40 years. I've spent my entire adult life here. I'm an artist. I make public art. I was on the bicycle and pedestrian committee for the city for more than 10 years. Four years ago, Diane and I decided to run together as a kind of slate. We pooled our resources. We gave ourselves the moniker "Emeryville Forward." Have we brought Emeryville forward? We have made changes in our city that has allowed us to increase our affordable housing. When we first got on council, there was no redevelopment agency. Governor Brown got rid of it. We had to change our parameters for density bonus. We did that. We now have a project we just approved of that is 17% affordable. We have one under construction that is 100% affordable. Some of the transportation things we've done as we've made our Emory Go-Round viable until 2023 with new funding. We've increased routes. We have a new shuttle going to West Oakland-Bart as a result of our negotiating for the Sherwin-Williams project, open to all Emeryville residents. So I look forward to serving four more years to continue some of the progress we've made in our city.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski?
Hello. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Ken Bukowski, and I am a 67-year-old senior. I am a 41-year resident, and I served on the city council for 24 long years. During that time, we redeveloped 65% of the city and made a lot of changes. I've been on every committee that the city established. I've been instrumental in a lot of things here. I'm concerned about the direction of the city. I'm concerned about the unfriendly business attitude. I mean, my colleagues here, they say they're proud about having the highest minimum wage in the country. Well, that's not a good idea. When you've got a small city, you need to be competitive. You don't want to have the highest one in the country. You may want to raise it, but you don't want to be uncompetitive. You're going to drive businesses out of the city. The fact that any two, three members of the council can just raise the wage to whatever it is, businesspeople aren't going to invest in that. That's not, even in Oakland, it has to go to the ballot before they can raise the minimum wage. So I'm really concerned about, I'm concerned about the parking management plan. Okay, I'm concerned about the marketing. I don't think that's a good idea. That's going to be more of a burden to businesses. You're going to make residents have to pay for parking. Now, the city's going to have to become part of your life. You have to look over your shoulder to see if you're going to get ticketed and towed and guests that visit you are going to have a problem. So I have some concerns about the city charter. I don't think it's really valid. I don't think it was approved in the right manner. You know, our charter says we're a general law city except for the collection of taxes. Well, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. Ms. Martinez, question one. Do you support Emeryville Measure S, and what are your reasons for supporting or opposing it?
So, thank you, Cheryl. Yes, I do support Emeryville's Measure S. Measure S will provide a general business tax to our cannabis businesses with a cap at 6%. The council has already given direction to staff to develop a tax scheme that is extremely reasonable and favorable to businesses, and we hope to see a lot of cannabis investment in Emeryville. As many people know, our sales taxes in brick-and-mortar stores are flattening, and in Emeryville, we need to diversify. This is a burgeoning industry. It's not making as much money as California had predicted, and it's our first year of recreational legalization. However, I think we will get to a point where we will be able to reap those benefits if we are smart about how we attract business.
Mr. Donahue, same question?
The business climate in Emeryville, I think proportional to the rest of the country and our surrounding cities, is very good. Our rate of taxation overall is a little bit lower than our surrounding cities, and this approach that we're taking on Measure S is a similar approach to how we've done taxation in our city. And we are attracting this industry at a much higher rate than our surrounding cities, and I think we're likely to benefit from that, and this will help out our general funds tremendously. General funds are something that our city has suffered with in the past. We've always had a shortfall. We were a city that was just unable to keep our general fund up. Well, I think we're going to be in much better shape going forward because of Measure S.
And Mr. Bukowski?
I'm not really sure. I'm not really supportive of Measure S because I think the tax rate's too high. You know, we legalized marijuana, but the taxes the state imposes and all these other taxes are so great that the black market is still there. I mean, there's always restrictions. You can't sell any at night. You can't sell here or there. And so it's really not eliminating the black market as it was supposed to, and that's why you're not getting as much revenue as anticipated. I think the tax rates should be lower in all these areas, and we should encourage more people to buy illegally than to just continue to encourage the black market. So I'm not supportive of Measure S.
Question two, Mr. Donahue. What do you see as the greatest challenge and greatest strengths of the city of Emeryville?
The greatest challenge is that, as a small city, we have to do big-city things, and we have more people that come to work here than live here. And to be a city that no longer is a redevelopment-agency-driven city means that because most of our city was in redevelopment, we don't get property taxes as our main funding. We have to pay attention to all our other tax streams and other income streams for our city. That's our biggest challenge. I think we're doing well in that department. The advantage we have is we are at the crossroads of the Bay Area, and I think we are, our location really gives us significant advantages going forward, and I think that we have things...
You can finish your sentence.
We have something I'm very proud of. We have the lowest greenhouse gas per capita consumption of any city in the Bay Area, and I think we're likely to improve on that even.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski, same question?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What do you see as the greatest challenge and the greatest strength of the city of Emeryville?
Well, the biggest challenge is going to be keeping businesses here. You know, you've just made it, the minimum wage, you've just made it more expensive to do business here. And with this Fair Work Week, you've imposed conditions on these businesses that don't exist in the neighboring cities. And as much as you think this is a great location, the businesses are going to go where it's less expensive to do business. That's the nature of business. And, you know, in the early '90s, we had a problem where we had factories closing, we were losing the tax base. We were desperate. You know, it doesn't take many businesses to close in Emeryville before you have to start cutting services. We had to cut police and fire services, and the community was in an uproar. I mean, that's, that's what makes a city, you know, livable, is having a good police and fire department. Once that's gone, you can't get it back. But we had redevelopment, so we had a way to encourage new businesses. Well, that doesn't happen anymore, so I think the attitude needs to change, and Emeryville needs to become more competitive with the neighboring jurisdictions. It takes time for those things to happen. People just don't locate here.
It's Ms. Martinez?
Yes, I'll just take a moment to respond to that. Berkeley just joined us at a $15 an hour minimum wage, so I think it's fair for us to be a leader on that charge. In terms of Fair Work Week, that's a practice rather than a cost for our businesses. What is our greatest challenge? It's the greatest challenge in the Bay Area. It's affordable housing. We're losing people from this community. We're losing families. We're losing community investment. We're losing volunteers. We're losing artists. We're losing experience. So affordability is our problem. How do we solve it? What is our greatest strength? It's our community. So our voters here in Emeryville passed at 72% an affordable housing bond measure. That's going to allow us to actually make a dent and make a difference in people's lives, stop displacement right here in Emeryville, and create new housing for people who are in need.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski? California intends on 100% clean energy by 2045. How will Emeryville prepare to hit those targets?
Well, I think we've already started with the EmmyGo round. I mean, we started that bus when I was on the council, and it carries 5,500 people a day, which takes a lot of cars with the road. It's also an example of how other places treat it. The property owners pay for it because it makes sense for them, and if that happened across the Bay Area, they, those communities could also lose, reduce their greenhouse gases. You know, we're a city that's evolving, so our greenhouse footprint is improved. We're looking at improving the quality of the energy we have. I would really like to see the city invest in some solar energy generators to see if we can put more power in the grid and save Emeryville people money on their energy. Emeryville doesn't have much solar, and I really think that's an area where we could be doing better. We have solar panels on City Hall, but I don't know how much savings it is, but I know it's well worth it.
Ms. Martinez?
So I think the most important thing that we could do locally about climate change is to be leaders in greenhouse gas reduction. And despite the federal government pulling out of the Paris Accord, Emeryville is and remains a signatory to the Global Covenant of Mayors, and we were the first city in 2016 to update our climate action plan to match our state goals, which have since risen with the passage of Senate Bill 100. They're more stringent, and we have a goal of 100% renewable energy by 2045. Now, I serve on the Board of Directors as Emeryville's representative to East Bay Clean Energy, where we are focused on creating clean local jobs, and we're procuring greener, cheaper energy for Alameda County. Scott serves as the alternate, and we've been on board with these ideas since the steering committee was committed, was created years ago. So we're knee-deep in creating real jobs here on the ground in Alameda County with green results.
Mr. Donahue?
100% by 2045. It is going to be challenging for all of us to do 100%, and I think that people have to get serious about this and really realize that all of us, if we're going to own cars in the future, are going to be driving electric cars. Most of our power is going to be coming from local sources. Actually, Emeryville is very well-suited to generate lots of solar power, and I think this is something that, as state laws change, we'll be allowed to have solar being transferred from one source to another, from one parcel to another, and we'll have what are called microgrids. And we are likely to see Emeryville at the lead of becoming completely 100% renewable energy by 2045, so...
Thank you. Ms. Martinez? How will you maintain transparency and open communication with your constituents?
Thank you for that question, Cheryl. I don't turn down any meeting, so anyone can reach me at dmartinez@emeryville.org. And, you know, I welcome feedback. It's, just the other day at a coffee with the candidates event, we, Scott and I sat down for an hour with a member of the community who is very concerned about our homeless population and the encampments at the borders of Emeryville. And then I spent today, as a result of that conversation, at one of the encampments just to see for myself what exactly has become of the situation, even though it's technically not in Emeryville. But I welcome feedback from all of my constituents in any form.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Transparency is something that, as a council member, we have to work at. We have to work at making sure that we communicate our direction, but also who we've spoken with about it. We have to publicize our intents and make sure that we get citizen feedback, and we really need to have records accessible that people can look at in the long run and say, oh, this is what was decided, this is, these records are available to anyone, and all of the issues of transparency are critical to the functioning of government.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski?
Well, I have to say I'm a leader in transparency. Before I got elected to the council, I did a written transcript of every council meeting for two years and put it out there. Since I've been on the council, I've become a videographer, and I video-record public meetings and events, and I make them available to the public. I posted the meetings for the school board for the past three years when they weren't doing it, and I made those meetings available. I think Emeryville, I have, I actually wrote an ordinance that I may introduce sometime soon, which would require the city to send you email notices about public hearings. We have lots of public hearings, which get hardly any attendance. That's because they're posted in the newspaper and nobody really sees them. But if you sent out emails to people without the public notices, you might get some response. Some people may actually show up and have something to say. But time after time, no one shows up. It doesn't matter to the council law. That's something I've been trying to get happening for a long time. I would allow a segment of the council meeting where people could call in with their concerns. Everybody can't attend the meeting, but at least they would have a way to get a message down here.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue? How is the city, or how should the city, work with the police department to ensure public safety while also looking at the criminal justice reform?
The, Emeryville Police work for us. We need to make sure that how our police function in our city are accountable to us, the residents, and we really should make sure that all people have equal treatment for how the police approach them, and that our police are accountable to how they're being, how they're functioning in our city.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski?
Okay, well, I don't want to contradict Scott, but the police work for the city manager. They don't work for the city council law. City council cannot give any direction to the police department. Only the city manager can do that. And one of the ways to increase council oversight is to have a program budget instead of the budget we now have. With a program budget, they would have to define each of the categories where they're going to be spending the money. So the council would have oversight in that, in that realm to be able to determine which programs they should and shouldn't have. And the police department in Emeryville has been really well-received by the community, but I'm concerned that with this parking management program, that relationship's going to change because now you'll be looking at the police, am I going to get ticketed? Am I going to get towed? I think it's going to change the relation and create a much big burden that they don't really have or need at this time. Emeryville has one of the best police departments in the state. We have a five-minute response time, which is excellent and better than anywhere else. But all this new housing and all this new growth, the state's not providing any more money to pay for those services.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. I'm going to say a couple of things that you might not hear out of one politician's mouth at a time. I'm going to say I support the Emeryville Police Department, and I'm going to say Black Lives Matter. I believe our police department is, is one of a kind, and they are, as Mr. Bukowski stated, they're very well-received by the public for a couple of reasons. One is our excellent response time, and two is that they, they treat everyone in a fair manner. The issues that I'm concerned with, with our police department are use-of-force policies, implicit bias training, and I think that these are policies that our chief of police has addressed. Are there more work to be done? Always. But she has definitely opened that door and has additionally looked at our training to make sure that we're up to date and that our officers have measured, physically measured responses to what they're seeing.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski? Measure A recently failed to pass in Alameda County. How can we provide childcare for low-income families?
Well, I have to say, one of the things I'm proud of is that myself and former council member Savage, we created the EmmyGo Child Development Center. We were the first city to have a public child development center agency. We had, when we started, we had 15, 15 families, that 15 working mothers that we were supportive and we provided them with daycare. I think every kid deserves to have daycare, and, you know, we've done our share here in the city, and, you know, I guess we're just going to have to work harder to pass the measure when it comes up the next time because we're doing way more than other cities are in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
So I supported Measure A. I'd like to see it come back. I think every family deserves a chance for childcare and early education, and here in Emeryville, I am proud of the investment that we've made into the Emeryville Child Development Center, and I think that we'll continue to support those families in one way or another as the years come.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
We've had to make choices about the Child Development Center that have enabled it to continue, and we have really worked hard to make sure that it is available to all Emeryville residents and working families that come to Emeryville, and it has a wide community support and is likely to continue.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez? What will happen to parking availability in Emeryville if we do not institute a parking
I think the problem will just get worse and worse. In some parts of the city, we're totally parked out during the day. At some, some parts of the city, we're parked out at night. Do I believe we need managed parking in our city? We do. As residents of Emeryville, we've been doing our part to cut down on vehicle trips by walking, by biking, by taking public transportation. But as regional shopping, as a regional shopping and business destination, there are a lot of single occupancy vehicles that come to our city without limit, and that creates problems for residents and for businesses. We haven't closed the door on feedback for this issue. We'll continue to have public meetings. There's at least one more public meeting scheduled on this issue, so I look forward to hearing from the public and, and getting additional analysis from staff.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
While no one likes to have meters come to their neighborhood, if you're a resident, it seems like things are changing for the worse, but the truth is, things are changing for the worse no matter what in our city. People come to park and take the various buses that go to San Francisco. We're being used as a parking lot for the surrounding region because our city, unlike our surrounding cities, we have no parking management or very limited enforcement. So I, I think we have to take action, but we have to take action that's suited to our community, that works for each neighborhood. We, I believe, are well-suited to adapt our parking program to fit our residents, and I think that we'll be better off for this in the future. Our small businesses will survive, and we will be in a better position to have our city remain a civil place.
Thank you.
I totally disagree. I mean, you're, you're impacting the lives of everyone. You're making it yet more expensive to live here and more expensive to work here. It will cause, you know, transportation is the first step to being homeless, and your mobility determines your freedom and your opportunity. So when you take, make it more expensive, the Emeryville residents that can't afford to pay for the parking, they're not going to be able to have a car. You know, they're not making any provision for ride-share services. That's one of the most booming ways of, new means of transportation. There's no provision for pickups or, so I really oppose it. You know, we have an, we have a complaint-based enforcement program for one reason. That's we only have them respond when there's an issue. If there's an issue with people taking a bus, then respond to that, but don't make the whole city pay for that. The other thing is, you know, we build these projects, we approve parking, and the parking, the landlords like Wareham, they don't use the parking for the purpose it was provided. So they have empty parking lots, and they charge $100 a month for parking, and so all free parking is taken. We need to enforce the parking for the projects as it was approved. That's the first step.
Mr. Donahue, what is your position on Measure 10, and how should the city of Emeryville be prepared if it passes or fails?
Prop 10 is something that will really affect our city if it passes. I support its passage. I think that so much of our city's been built after, I think it was 1993, that would not allow us to have rent control of any kind. Going forward, if it passes, we will have the opportunity to have some kind of rent control that we choose to have. What's the likely outcome? Perhaps certain people are going to sell their rentals and make them into condos. Maybe we can have a way to help current residents buy their apartments and have them be their condos.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski.
Yeah, I've actually written a position on Proposition 10, and it's out there on the table. On the back of it, it shows you a graph of the amount of jobs and housing that have been created in nine Bay Area counties. And we're creating jobs at the rate of five times faster than we're building housing. So the first step to this problem is to reduce this creation of jobs. I mean, how many more people do we want to live in this area? What is our capacity? You know, displacement, you know, it inflicts emotional distress, instability, separation of families, discourages community involvement. And, and, and these decision-makers are inviting these workers here, and they know they don't have anywhere to live. This is an effort to force the people, poor people and middle-income people out of California, because they know what they're doing. I mean, why do we want to encourage so many more new people and jobs? I mean, how does that benefit the people that live here? I think it's a problem. We need to maybe limit growth somewhat. You know, these new jobs that are created are not for the people that live here. They're for the people that are coming in here. Rent control is the only solution to stability.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
California's economy is the fifth-greatest in the world because of our ability to create jobs. That said, I am in support of Prop 10. If we were to institute rent control right now, we would affect less than 800 units in this city, and that is not nearly enough. So I am in support of Prop 10, and I'd like to take a look at meaningful rent control to help the renters in this city who are a majority of our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski. Many of our school board candidates are here in the audience. How can the city council work to support and collaborate with the school board?
Well, I have to say that in my past, I was responsible, along with Nora Davis, to create the city school committee, the city school partnership, and help create the ECCO. But, you know, nobody is left who was behind that project. I'm the only one that's still here. All, everybody else is still gone. I don't know if the city council and the school board understand the premise under which that project was created. It's not doing what was, what it was supposed to, to bring the community together. And so I really think, you know, that's, that's something that I really want to do. I want to see, we've got to encourage business community to be involved with it. You know, when the school district was created, we had great business support, but that's just eroded, and nobody's really taking the ball on trying to improve that relation. So I think we've got a long way to go, and we created the monthly meeting, but they're not needing monthly anymore. But I think we should get back to the monthly meeting with the school board.
So, Ms. Martinez, how can the council and the school board work, support each other and work in collaboration?
So I think it's important to find areas where we all agree and start from there. I volunteer at the school campus, school city campus, five days a week, spearheading our recycling program for both the city and for the schools. So I'm supportive of collaboration. I think that things like recycling, we can all agree on. There are other areas that I'd like to work with the, with the school board on. For instance, I recently brought up the issue of hate speech on the campus, which, again, I'm there five days a week. So there are things I hear from the kids that, that, you know, I, as an adult, could use some direction to, to work on these situations. And I, I think school is no place for hate, and I think it needs to be a welcoming campus, not just from the school's point of view, but from the city's point of view as well, where we welcome all types of people.
Thank you. And Mr. Donahue.
The city schools meeting series that we've been on for the last four years has had acrimony. We've had disagreements between the school board and the council. And I think this election could solve that problem. And I'm hoping that we have some seriously great candidates for our school board. And I think that if we can have some kind of sympathetic relationship between the two bodies, which are legally separated, we have opportunities for our school. I think that our school system can be improved if we rethink. I don't think we have to be slavish to the original vision of K through 12 all being in one place. Our surrounding cities, I think we could be in coalition with to, for greater efficiency and quality.
Thank you. This next question, you know, the homeless situation throughout the Bay Area has encroached on every major city and throughout California, but how would you propose to work with neighboring cities to deal with the situation? And this question first goes to Mr. Bukowski. Actually, I'm sorry, it first goes to Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Cheryl. Well, it's easy for anyone with a pair of eyes to see that our homeless population has jumped by 30% in a few short years. As I said earlier, I visited the encampment behind Home Depot today, and it's in a really sorry state. And it's technically not in Emeryville. Another encampment is just north of our city by Aquatic Park. That's technically in Berkeley. So it is important that we're able to work with Oakland, with Berkeley, with Caltrans, and all of our regional partners to make sure that, that we're, we're using all of the resources available to all of us to improve things. We recently had the fortune of hiring Christine Daniel, a new city manager, who has worked in Berkeley and in Oakland, and who is in charge of Public Works as well as the homeless strategy in Oakland. So I think that we can have a meaningful impact on the lives of the unhoused and make our streets safer for everyone as we work regionally. And our investments as a city, they're regional investments. We invest in, in beds for people who, who need a warm place to sleep. We invest in a coordinated entry system. There are many ways that we're already doing this outreach.
Thank you. You, Mr. Donahue, sorry.
Our police actually know our homeless population by name. Why? Well, because our police really are trying to work with social services in our county to address the issues of our homeless population. And I think that if we continue to work with our surrounding cities, I think we're likely to make some progress on this issue. Our new affordable housing bond might give us the chance to make something that would directly aid with supportive housing some of our homeless population. Our food bank continues to feed this group. If we can somehow pressure Caltrans to allow us to clean up the way that Oakland and Emeryville can on the Caltrans right of way, I think it would go a long way for helping the most desperate of our homeless people.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski.
You know, I spend a lot of time at regional meetings of the MTC and Association of Bay Area Governments, and I can tell you that one of the first steps that they could do is transportation. You know, you can provide housing for somebody, but if they can't afford to go anywhere, they can't be productive, they can't go to school, they can't learn, they can't, can't do anything. You know, I was, I was opposed to regional measure three because it didn't provide any money to make transit affordable. I actually think we could make public transit free. We made public transit free, then homeless people would be able to get where they need to go. They would probably be happy. Those people would probably disappear overnight. You know, your freedom is determined by your mobility. And when you can't go anywhere, it's like when you commit a crime, they take away your mobility, they push you in jail. And so the transportation component, we have the most expensive transportation in the nation, most expensive rapid rail system. They don't even offer a monthly pass. And so they need to start taking bridge tolls like they do in New York, where they take 40% of the tolls and, and write down the cost of transit. But we could ultimately make it free.
Thank you. This, this next question will be the last one, so that we can end on time. And we will start with Mr. Donahue. What are your top three priorities if you are re-elected?
Top priority is to continue to build affordable housing in our city. Our transportation system requires attention at all times. We're getting gridlocked during rush hour. I think that having some bus-only lanes, especially at rush hour, would really help our city out. We need to continue to make improvements in this aspect of our city. And I would like to think that we could have more cultural things in our city, which would attract people to visit our city more. We're going to be having a new art center, and I think if we're strategic about how we think of our city as a cultural asset, this could help us out, not just economically, but with the life of our city.
Thank you. Mr. Bukowski.
I would work real hard to try to improve the relationship between the business community and the city council. I think we're really at risk here of losing businesses, and that's really important. I founded the Chamber of Commerce in 1986, and it went, went under. And it was created with the idea of bringing the residents and business people together to create combined resources to save the people in the city money on everything there is, and that could be done. I'm very concerned about the city charter. The city decided that, well, we can't, as a general law city, we're not allowed to collect real estate transfer tax, so let's create a charter, and our charter says we're only a charter city for the purpose of collecting taxes. Well, they really just circumvented the state law, and I think it could be challenged. We need to take the opportunity that we have with this charter and bring the community together to create the way we want this government to operate. This is a great opportunity to involve all the people and to make changes in the way the city operates, to follow the will of the people. And I think that's a big thing. And then, you know, we've got to be, well...
Thank you. And Ms. Martinez, if you are re-elected, your top three priorities?
Well, it's hard to narrow it down to three, but I'll echo what Scott said about affordable housing. We can't stop building housing. We need very affordable housing. We need moderately affordable housing. We, we need more housing in this state. We also need better access to transportation. I would continue to make sure that we're, you know, as a, as a community without a Bart stop, we need to stay focused on the fact that we need quality last-mile opportunities. And then I also want economic opportunity for all. I want to bring quality jobs into the community, and I want to continue to protect our labor enforcement standards.
Thank you. So before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. Thank you to the candidates for running for office and for your participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, the pros and cons, and positions on ballot measures, please visit the League's website at lvvbae.org or votersedge.org/California. We invite you to join the League to help us defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration and education. You can visit our website, our Facebook page, and our Twitter account, @LWBAE. The deadline to register to vote is October 22nd this year, and we encourage all of you not only to register to vote online, but to check your voter registration to make sure that it is valid. And you can register to vote on, at the Secretary of State's website at sos.ca.gov, or you can register or re-register to vote tonight. Please stop by our table on the way out for forms and information. And remember to vote by mail or at your polls by November 6th. Now, the candidates will make their closing statements, and we will reverse the order that we gave our opening statements. And we will start with Mr. Bukowski. You will have one and a half minutes.
Well, I've served in the council for a long time. I understand what the needs of the city are, and I think the count first priority of the city council should be to serve the people that live here. That's what you're elected to do. And if they want to do something that doesn't agree with what you want to do, then you have to do what the people want you to do, and I've always done that. You know, people don't understand that with the city manager, former government, that the city manager controls the staff, not the city council. And the city manager does not, should not be having community meetings or involved with the community. That's the job of the city council. When the manager meets with the community, it's circumventing the role of the council member. Not a good thing, because eventually then the people start asking the manager, well, who should I vote for? Who should I give my money to? And that creates problems. You know, we had, city manager has a lot of control. We used to have a city manager that wanted to, lifetime contract. I was responsible for a measure that limited the, the term of a key city employee to only two years to prevent that from happening. I want to see, you know, I wanted to create retail condominiums. I wanted to provide an opportunity for a small business person to actually exist. If you create a condominium and the city makes it very inexpensive, they can pay their wages, pay higher wages and charge less for goods and services. They could actually compete with larger, larger companies. It would create tax measure, tax revenue, would put people to work, and your retail component really shapes the way your community look. How many people have said, well, you and Ikeaville and all that? Well, that's because the stores that you have determine the quality of the place you live. I might, well...
Thank you. And Mr. Donahue.
I'd like to say that I'm proud to be endorsed by a number of people, that, some of whom are in this room. Mayor John Bouters, Vice Mayor Ally Medina, Council Member Christian Pats, School Board Trustee Barbara Inch. Regionally, I've been endorsed, I should say, Diane and I have been endorsed by all these people. Diane and I have been endorsed by Assembly Member Tony Thurman, Assembly Member Rob Bonta, State Senator Nancy Skinner, Berkeley Mayor Jesse Aragon, and Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf. And this is just some of our, the confidence that we've been given. And this has helped us proceed as a city council to create new things, new ideas. And I hope that we're going to continue to do that as a council. And I expect that we're going to be creating more new parks. We've just opening one. We're expanded, the expanded Christie Park is, should be opening within weeks. We're going to have, we have a new section of the Emeryville Greenway that's just opened up. We're going to be getting a new park at the Sherwin-Williams Project. And I look forward to our new art center that will not be costing the voters any money. That's going to be happening within the next two years. I'd like to just say also that our city is a creative city.
Thank you. And Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the, the League of Women Voters. Thank you, Cheryl, for moderating. I want to thank my slate mates, Scott Donahue and Ken Bukowski, our opponent. If I'm elected to continue representing the Emeryville community, I would be honored to fight for you. We're at a crossroads in American politics, and I'm very proud to be a progressive woman of color running for city council here in Emeryville. You can find out more information about me at facebook.com/votmartinez. And in addition to the, the host of officials that have, Scott stated, that have endorsed us, I'd like to add, former Emeryville mayors Greg Harper, Nora Davis, and Jack Asher, as well as the organization's Residents United for a Livable Emeryville, also known as RUL, Firefighters Local 55, the Emeryville Police Officers Association, the Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, the Building and Construction Trades Council of Alameda County, and the Alameda Labor Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we give our candidates a round of applause for their participation this evening? And I just want to say that it's, it's very difficult to run for office, as Nick and I both know. And, and so we appreciate their participation, and we participate your participation this evening. Gracias por todos, and gracias por la atención. Thank you, and have a good night.